I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome to the public hearing for fiscal year 2026 for the Attleboro Public Schools. This is your notice that this meeting is being electronically recorded. The proposed budget as of today is for $110 million, seventy-four thousand, four hundred fifty-six dollars, ninety-two cents. The way the public hearing works is we will invite the public to address the committee based on their stance on the budget as proposed. So first, we will invite up anyone that would like to speak in favor of the proposed budget. We will then invite up anyone that would like to speak in opposition to the opposed budget. And then we will also give time to anyone that would like to speak neither for nor against the proposed budget. The $110 million proposed budget is, as I said, as of today. This reflects a level service, minimum net school spending budget. Due to some unforeseen and unexpected staffing circumstances at City Hall, the full budget number was not ready in time for us, for our publicity for this public hearing. We do anticipate, and have been promised by the mayor, a two to two and a half percent increase over the net school spending minimum, which is, which is in the neighborhood of where we have been over the last number of years. So I wanted to provide the community with that context before we begin the, the public hearing. So at this time, I will invite anyone up to speak either, to speak in favor of the proposed budget. Is there anyone that would like to speak in favor of the proposed budget? Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
Mr. George McKay, Street, Attleboro. So I'm speaking in favor of the budget because I think the children of Attleboro are the future. And I think we need to invest wisely in our future. Because not only should we invest in every child, but children with disabilities as well. Because as we all know, there's speculation that Albert Einstein was on the spectrum, Isaac Newton, and Emily Dickinson. Those are some well-known founders. So Emily Dickinson was a renowned poet. She expressed herself through poetry. She was able to do that and work through her way for her speculation of autism and the spectrum disorder by expressing that through her poetry. Isaac Newton was hyper-focused on able and able to make groundbreaking discoveries. The same thing with Albert Einstein. The fact is that Greta Thunberg, who is a Swedish environmental activist, has Asperger's and autism. And she considered it her superpower. So investing in our children with disabilities would give not only our future better, but it also may be able to give an autistic child the voice that he needs, he or she needs, to be able to become the next Albert Einstein, Isaac Newton, or a young lady, Emily Dickinson, Greta Thunberg, or Mary Temple, who was also on the autism spectrum. And she was a scientist at Colorado University for animals. Also, Dan Agram, who is, we all know, an actor and a comedian. When I go home and I tell my son that we're watching Ghostbusters and he's autistic, he gets so excited. He says, "I can be a Ghostbuster?" Of course, buddy, you can be whatever you want, but not without the support he needs in our school system. So be able to give our kids a fair chance. I think the proposed buzzet, budget would be able to help these kids get the support they need to be able to become a Ghostbuster, or a poet, or even somebody who is a renowned activist in science for animals. So I think Attleboro needs to invest wisely in these kids. Because again, all of the children, disabilities and non-disabilities, are the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. George. Hang tight one moment. One thing I forgot to explain about the format. Two things I forgot to explain about the format. I apologize. One, comments during the public hearing do need to be limited to, to the, the budget. Nothing you said was out of line. You were speaking in favor of the budget. But two, the committee will ask questions or comment, or there is an opportunity for that. Does anybody have any questions or comments from Ms. George? Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor of the budget as proposed? Is there anyone that would like to speak in favor? Is there anyone that would like to speak in opposition to the budget as proposed?
Hi, Joey Ford, 44 R Smith Street. I, I'm not really for or against because I don't see the line item. I really need to see things like broken down to give a real total perspective. However, I've noticed, at least in the FY25, we're paying principals over $200,000 a year. This is insane for a public position. Superintendent Sawyer told me that he makes $230,000 per year, also insane. We should be allocating this money towards the special education kids more than the administrators. The average administrator salary in this district as of FY25 was $190,000 per year, plus benefits. But I just think this is outrageous and we really need to be putting the kids first, not the adults that aren't doing their jobs in the first place. Thank you.
Mr. Ford, hang tight. Does anybody have any questions or comments for Mr. Ford? The, the salaries that you mentioned for principals, Mr. Ford? You were looking at the FY25 line item? So the, the administration can correct me, but I'm pretty sure the principal line items for each building include both principal and assistant principal salaries, correct?
And associates in the case.
Or, or the associate principals in the case at the high school. So that, that over $200,000 number is actually two salaries, not, not just the one?
Thank you for the clarification. Still, a lot. We need to put it towards the kids, not the administrative salaries, and definitely not towards legal oversight and these, whatever that 27% increase was for FY25 for the administrative extra stuff. I'll come back on my public comment and give you the, the exact name for that.
Mr. Bennett?
I just want to let you know, we won't be able to answer any questions you raised during the open forum portion as normal, right? So this is a chance for, if you have specific questions, we have expertise here who can provide the answers now.
Right.
That's why I just want to make sure before you go down, before you sit down, that any, any questions you have, oh, I'm sorry.
Any questions that you have that you would like answers to?
It's all right. If I, I'm all out. I didn't write my speech. I'm autistic. It's really hard for me to do this, just off rip. But you've been great. You've always responded to me through email. So if I have any follow-up questions, I'm sure I'll be reaching out to you.
Yeah, I'll try to get you the answer. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for Mr. Ford? Thank you, Mr. Ford. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in opposition? Anyone that would like to speak in opposition? Is there anyone that would like to speak neither for nor against?
So I'm not for nor against. I support your hard work. I feel like the state is, the state money is half of your budget, so I think I should come, whether I have all the good news or not.
I apologize, sir, but could you please state your name and address for the record?
I'm Jim Hawkins, State Rep for Attleboro. I've tried in the past different tricks to, because it's a formula, so there's no way to get money special just for Attleboro unless you change something. And we've tried every year a trick to deal with, with the enrollment or something else to get something else extra, and we still come up empty. This year, I put in for money for in, in district transportation costs because it hasn't been reviewed for like 20 years or something. They didn't sound very optimistic. So I don't have any good news for you that way. I think after doing this for so many years and really basically coming up empty for any kind of increase over what comes out of Student Opportunity Act, which is nothing, there's a significant impetus across the state at the, at the hearing, the Ways and Means hearing from education. District after district after district was saying we need to revisit Chapter 70. It took years to do it last time with the Student Opportunity Act, and it's not fully implemented at this point. There's mixed feelings on that, but I've been a strong advocate for its time. We're not the only school district that doesn't, doesn't get our fair share of, of state money. And in terms of Bill Larson, you were kind enough to reach out to me with your charts on the cost of healthcare. It's scary, and it seems that, that's part of what we were talking about today in, in the Ways and Means hearing on health and, health and human services, was the pharmacy benefit managers and all the other cost drivers that are making pharmaceuticals affect the cost of healthcare, which is going to be a big driver for you in the next few years. Like to say I brought a lot of good news, but we're trying. I'm working on it.
Any questions or comments, Mr. DiVinci?
Yeah, and thank you for coming, as you always do, for the budget hearing. You mentioned the Student Opportunity Act. For anybody who wasn't fully aware, several years ago, the state revamped the Chapter 70 funding formula for the first time in about 27 years. And the initial estimates were looking to be favorable for a community like Attleboro. And what's really happened is about the bottom dozen or 13, 14 districts. Bottom six, bottom half dozen, has absorbed most of the funds. And while, and many districts didn't get any extra funding out of it, while Attleboro gets a little, it's barely, barely. So while all these, and so this all to come to a question. Because you mentioned Ways and Means, which was here today. And many districts asking about or requesting changes to Chapter 70 funding.
It was actually last week at UMass Amherst, that hearing.
Oh, is that, that's where that happened? Because I know we had Ways and Means here today.
Today was Health and Human Services. So we were talking about, about healthcare costs, which is primarily driven by pharmaceuticals.
Was there any discussion about looking at the Student Opportunity Act and how that's been being funded? Because we still have a couple of more years for that.
In the education hearing, which was a week ago at UMass Amherst, absolutely was, Senator Comerford from the western part of the state asked Tutwiler if he was willing to, to work on revisiting Chapter 70, and he gave her a flat, no. No. So we're, we're trying to, the revision that you're talking about, it was at 27 years, but it was, it wasn't when it was reviewed. It hadn't been reviewed since before there was special ed reform, before there were computers, before there was MCAS. None of those were included in the formula in the one that we just did. And we didn't know in our own districts how our own district would benefit until we'd already voted on it and it was enacted several months later. So there's strong, strong sentiment that we can't go another 27 years. We need to start on it now, which won't help you for FY26, won't help you for FY27. But if we don't do that, we're going to be stuck in the same old, same old, where you just get dribs and drabs every year. I've been very vocal within my body that we need to do this. I know the Senate is interested in, in doing this. There was some, some work on that in the budget last year, which the Senate accepted, the House did not. I'm not letting go. I'll keep, I'll keep bugging them until we, we get something going. It took years to get the last revision, so no promises that this, if I'm successful, that this would be fixed sometime in 2025 and help you for next year. It won't be that fast, but, but we do need to, we do need to, we have to do it. And now other school districts are feeling the same pressure that Attleboro is, so it's, it's time.
Thank you. Mr. Hawkins, sorry, just as a, a quick follow-up. I know, was, was Secretary Tutwiler's response that under no circumstances, anytime in the future, he would not be interested in looking at?
He wouldn't spearhead it. He wanted it to come from the legislature. He wouldn't be involved in it. He would only follow what the legislature does.
Okay, because I, I, I think the, knowing that the student.
He could add some expertise to the, to the discussion, but apparently not, so. Sorry, I've been, I've been on my best behavior all day in the Ways and Means hearings, so. I hope I'm amongst friends now, so I can be a little more blunt, but.
That's your poor behavior, then. You're making me feel bad about myself. No, I think that, that I'm hopeful that, that if the legislature does, is able to take action. I support everything you just said, that with Student Opportunity Act expiring FY27?
It doesn't expire, but it's been through its seven years of implementation, where each year grows on the year before. The chair, last year's chair in the House, Denise Garlick, didn't run for reelection, so there's a new chair this year. And we've been busy with hearings non-stop for the last three weeks, so I haven't had a chance to sit down with him and see how he feels about it. He's somebody who I respect, so hopefully, hopefully we can get him on our side and get something going.
Because I, I do think it's, when, whenever Student Opportunity Act does, whenever the implementation has worn off, I think that, that would be a good time to have an alternative in place, which.
That's the House version right now. It's not the Senate version. They wanted to start, start the discussion last year in 2024. So I think anybody on Ways and Means that was listening to that hearing in Amherst knows that across the state, not just me and Attleboro, but west, the western part of the state, everybody is eager to, to get going. It's going to take more than a year or two to do this, long after Student Opportunity's been through its seven years of implementation.
Thank you. Mr. Bennett?
Thank you. Representative Hawkins, thanks for coming. As always, it's a pleasure to hear you. Everybody, I believe everybody here believes that the state should alter their funding formulas or whatever other magic they need to do in order to give us some more money so that we can educate the children of Attleboro in the way they deserve to be educated. And, and I know that you, both you and Representative Scanlon, who represents North Attleboro in the corner of Attleboro that's in Ward 3B, are advocates for making whatever changes required to the formulas in order to get some more money here in Attleboro. And I, and I also know that, you know, the normal, the normal thing for someone to do to advocate for something they want at the state level is to email their state representatives. And I email you all, all the time, and you always get back to me. So I know that, I know that you're working at it, and I know that Representative Scanlon is. But what else can someone who's from Attleboro, who wants to see something done at the state level to effect some change as far as the state funding? would jump up, and all of a sudden, we'd be eligible. I got them to change that. It should be October 1st, as of October 1st, and they gave us extra time on that, and the enrollment didn't, didn't come back. Nice try, I'm pretty proud of, pretty proud of the creativity, but it didn't get you any more money, so I'm feeling a little pessimistic about that, but it's right to me. The more people write to me, the more, the more I can say that my community supports me when I ask for this. It isn't just Jim Hawkins who used to teach here and thinks it's important, my whole community wants this. So I would encourage people to write and support me on that. I may not answer, but I would definitely record all those, and I can say, hey, I got 30 emails from constituents talking about this, we need to do it. That's, that's very useful.
Okay, I'll keep emailing you then.
Thank you. That's good.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments for Representative Hawkins?
Wish I had better news, but.
We appreciate all the work, thank you.
I've been here for a long day, so if you don't mind, I'm, I'm going to head off.
Thank you. Have a good night. Is there anyone else that would like to speak neither for nor against the budget as proposed?
Good evening. My name is John Davis, and I reside at 439 Lindsay Street, and I greatly appreciate the input Representative Hawkins had this evening. But this is a dual-edged sword that we've been dealing with for, well, over 30 years that I've been involved with city government. We always talk about changing the Chapter 70 funding, and I've spent a fair amount of time over the last few years looking into that. And to be honest with you, from my analysis, what I see is that, yeah, we may be able to argue that we're being short-changed by the state, but I think it's clear and evident that we're being short-changed by the local community. I can say that, because I'm not an elected official, and I don't have to get votes, but I can speak the truth for the children of our community. What percentage of the 110 million proposed budget for 2026 comes from the state? It's probably 55, 56%?
Of, of the 110 right now, we're at 50%. And then, and then it would go up, actually, no, it would be 50.
Oh, 53.
53.
Right, because if I'm not mistaken, last year was 53, 54. I think the general public doesn't realize that. I think the general public probably believes that 70 or 80% of all their school funding comes from local revenues, their property taxes. And we're already receiving from the state, which naturally, we would love more, but we're already receiving a substantial amount of funding for education. I think, in the long run, every community is going to advocate at the state level to get increased funding under Chapter 70. And that's what's been holding them back for the last three and a half decades, four decades, since we implemented Prop 2 and 1/2. Where we're really going to make grounds, if we're going to make grounds, is by figuring out how we're going to get more money allocated from the city side, which, as we all know, is only possible if we're able to grow industrial business base, commercial property. And no one wants to speak about that, again, because it's, it's, it's not an easy, it's not an easy thing to explain to people to begin with. You know, everybody wants to believe that they're doing everything they can to help the next generation of children, but, you know, I have great concerns that, you know, we've been kicking the can down the road. I remember the superintendent speaking a couple of years ago at an event I attended, where he made a great point of, we're a victim of our own success. This system has done so incredibly well with such limited funding that we've come to just accept that. You know, that the children of Attleboro, for the per dollar spent, probably get as good an education as anyone in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. But I think we can do better. I think you all know we can do better. I, I think probably everyone in the community knows that we can do better, and hopefully believes we should. I, I have a lot of real concerns about people being afraid to speak up and buck the trend. You know, it's easy to say that we want to receive or deserve to receive money from some obscure entity, the state. You know, every school committee in the state that's meeting is saying the same thing right now, with that they should get more money. What we really need to acknowledge, and as, again, as the superintendent has pointed out very well, is that Attleboro doesn't have a budgetary problem. We have a revenue problem. You guys do incredibly well with what you're given. I mean, I've spent 40 years as a businessman and as a business consultant. I help people with budgets all the time, so this, this isn't something that's foreign to me. I think you do an incredibly good job with what you have. I think, though, we have to admit that we need to make a concerted effort to bring in more revenue. And I hate to say it, but I feel some of that is on this board to articulate both to the taxpayers and to the other elected officials on the city side that make these decisions. I mean, I was one of those individuals for many years, years ago, and that's, it, obviously, it's a difficult situation, but nobody gets money in this world unless they ask for it. I guarantee you, neither the man or the city council is ever going to come running to you to offer you one penny more than you ask for, and I also guarantee you from having been there, is that they're going to try to figure out ways to minimize the amount that they feel they have to give you and, and keep you content. I think you need to not just settle on being content. I think sometimes you have to rock the boat. And I understand that, you know, people don't want to hear that. People like to think that everything is running perfectly, that they, you know, their children are getting the best education they possibly can. Now, I only recently, last couple of days, had a chance to glance over the proposed school budget. I was actually hoping that this evening, that there'd be an overview of it or a printed copy before this hearing started, but there wasn't. But I've got a couple of questions that I'm sure can easily be answered, but I just want to make sure that, that they're addressed this evening in case they don't come up. And one of the things that concerned me is all this talk recently about special education. And as someone who's spent most of my adult life involved in municipal government in one way, shape, or form, it really has intrigued me, all this conversation. So I've started exploring sort of the facts and figures, and, and one of the interesting things that came up today with the draft of the proposed budget I saw was an $800,000 cut in the line item for special education. Now, I know there's some special circumstances and conditions that have happened that, that have caused that, and I was just wondering if we could take a moment for someone to explain clearly how that came about, so that everybody will be aware of the facts and realities of that.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. So, Mr. Fertado can, can provide more detail, but my understanding is the, the district is in a good financial situation for FY '25, and so is able to prepay some out-of-district tuitions and prepay some of the special education costs for FY '26, so that that's less money, so that we have more fiscal flexibility for FY '26?
Yeah, no, that's, that's exactly right. We're taking an anticipated surplus, we're not there yet, but feel strong about it, and we're going to apply that to FY '26 special needs costs requiring less FY '26 dollars, because they were offset by FY '25 dollars. If you put credit of the FY '25 monies being spent for FY '26, you'd end up with about a $300,000 increase, not a $800,000 cut.
Okay, so, so in reality, we're spending roughly 1.1 million more on special education, not actually reducing it. Something that I think to the average person just glancing at this superficially could, could easily misunderstand, and I think it's, again, with all the talk about special education and all the circumstances around that, I think it's important to clearly articulate to the public that this is clearly a growing, a growing area, as are most areas involving education. But I think, again, it speaks to what I said a few moments ago about you being almost a victim of your own success. You have this money to carry over to go towards that line, because you've done such a good job, you've been a good steward of what the community has allocated you. And I think, I think that's an important point to make. I think it's a point that this board, out of maybe humility, doesn't frequently credit itself for, you know, the hard work of the administration. I mean, Mark and all the staff, I'm sure, are very meticulous in every penny that is spent, and I think if you're going to ask the community for more money in the future to make our program even better, we've got to be honest about acknowledging how hard we've worked to tighten our belt straps. You know, I, I know from having worked on the city side of government, how there's this illusion that somehow there's this bottomless pit where money is just thrown out, and, and I'm afraid some people see that in education as well, because it's such, it's such a large number, and most people can't relate to 110 million dollars. We saw earlier, just a few moments ago, the misconception about the line item for administrators, and that's something that, now, the average person wouldn't realize that, you know, that, that includes more than one individual. But those are the kind of points I think you need to make to people, because, you know, I've had endless conversations lately about funding for schools, and one disbelief after another by people in the public. And there are people who do believe that, you know, we're paying people in our system a quarter of a million dollars left and right. We all know that, that, you know, there aren't endless people working in government who are making a quarter of a million dollars, and that most of the entry-level people, the people who work in this building every day, are making barely enough money to be able to afford to live in our community. That's, that's the real reality, and we shouldn't be afraid to say that. And we shouldn't be afraid to say that we're going to work towards trying to figure out how to be able to pay people the kind of wage it takes to get the best and brightest people to come and educate our children. And I've always viewed education as an investment in the future. People look at it as an expenditure, but as a business person, I look at it as a capital investment. And I'm going to, I'm going to leave it at that, but I, but I just want to implore you to not be afraid, to ask for what we all know we need, even though it, it's hard and you'll get criticism, and by the time I get home, they'll be bad-mouthing me on Facebook about, I want to raise their taxes, and every other bad thing people can imagine. People elect you, you know, to fight for our kids, and I implore you to do that, and I believe, in the long run, we'll all be better off the harder you fight. And I, I thank you for indulging me this evening. I don't, I don't tend to come up and just randomly speak, you know, unless I feel strongly, but this is really the only opportunity during the year for people to talk about the finances of our school system. And until people start kicking and screaming, and if you indulge me for a couple moments, I was one of the first people in this community, well over 30 years ago, to advocate for building this building. Back at a time when I was getting criticized publicly in the newspaper, day after day, about this idea of, why would we possibly want to build a new high school? In the 1990s, the idea of building a new high school seemed, seemed to be an overly progressive, crazy thought. But look how long it took to make this happen, but now look at the benefits that have, that have come of it. We're not going to solve the funding problem we have with education in a year or two or three. I think everyone in this room realizes that it's possible in the next five years that we could actually be the most poorly funded school system in the state of Massachusetts, and that's a hard thing to accept. But if we start putting things in place to move us in the right direction, you know, 15, 20 years from now, I may not be around, some of us may not be around, we may be a lot closer to providing the kind of funding necessary to give state-of-the-art education to, you know, to our children, our grandchildren, and I'll leave it at that. Thank you so much this evening for indulging me, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that anyone may have.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Davis? Mr. DiManucci?
I do. Hey, John, thank you for coming forward to speak. You know, you've been involved in the city for a long time, as you mentioned, so I'm not going to go through the resume that, you know, and, and all the points that you've made. I mean, you're not wrong. You also know that we could ask the city to give us whatever budget we want, and that ultimately, the city council and the, and the mayor make the decision on that. One thing we have been doing in the last couple of years is we get the city council to come to a joint meeting with the school committee. They see our reality. They see that if we were funded at the average expense per pupil that the rest of the Commonwealth gives, it would be a significant increase to the budget. We don't have the answer to how to get that. We go after the state funding, because the state is making changes in how they're getting their revenues, including the fair share amendment, and those funds that have been created, or other people call it the millionaire's tax, is supposed to go towards two targeted areas around transportation and education. So we're constantly fighting with Jim, not fighting, but challenging Jim, asking him to advocate for us to get more of that funding, because the other alternatives, as you mentioned, take a lot of time. So I don't think it's a, at least from my perspective, I'm not afraid to speak to the city council, I'm not afraid to speak to the mayor about where funding needs to be. It's a matter of how are we going to do it? What is the plan? So they're not going to have a magic wand that they can wave and give us that money overnight, as you know, but what is the plan? And I think we can challenge that, and say, is there a, is there a plan? We, under, I remember under Mayor Dumas and Barry LaCast, when he was the budget, they had put together an educational plan of points forward, how to, how to grow the pie a little bit, and, you know, elections happen and mayors change, and people pivot away from where those types of plans would go. The city has given us a stabilization fund that we can use for special education expenses, usually out-of-district costs if we anticipate them to be higher than expected, but that's the only thing that we're allowed to use it for. I will advocate to have more flexibility with a stabilization fund, similar to what the city has. But as you mentioned, it's, it's, I don't, I don't think it's a case where, where, you know, we haven't had these conversations, and we haven't had these discussions with our colleagues on the council or with the mayor, but we collectively have to come together. And I believe that's what the, the city is trying to do with the one budget initiative that has been raised. I don't know if you have attended those. I know Mr. Larson is our attendee here, so we have our pulse on the funding, the challenges. And, and so I guess I would just say, I appreciate you coming here, I appreciate you making those suggestions, challenging us to step up more. I do just want to be clear that, you know, we've had a lot of conversations with folks. Maybe we need to make that more publicly known at times.
And, and that probably would be my biggest point, is to make things like that publicly known, that, that the effort is, is taking place, because I don't disagree with anything you've said, and, and as we all know, like I said, it's going to be a great uphill battle. This, you know, we didn't get here overnight. I'm sure there was a time in our lifetime, most of our lifetime, when Attleboro wasn't near the very bottom of funding in the state. It's been a long time.
I'm not sure when that was.
But, but I was quite intrigued. I, if I could, I read an article in the, I believe it was the Globe the other day, where they were talking about other communities that are struggling in their mind, such as Milton, Newton, and other places that we would consider Brookline, places that we would consider to be super affluent and that they're incredibly well-funded, and yet, from their perspective, they believe that they are somehow being short-changed. And so, you know, it, it's a fight that everyone is fighting. I just want to know myself that we're fighting as hard as we can, and I want the public to understand that our community is fighting as hard as they can. You make an excellent point about the so-called millionaire's tax. There's a lot of money that's been raised already by that, and there's been a lot of questions at the State House about, where is that money going? And is any of it actually going out? You know, I mean, the, the state legislatures are really, and I've spent a lot of time dealing with people up there, is a really interesting, interesting place, but I'll, I'll stop in Mrs. Storrs's question.
Thank you. Well, first of all, thank you for being here and for speaking. Yeah, one of the things I, I don't think a lot of people understand is, is we start our budget process in December, and it, it's, per our policy, the administration works with very limited information, and we start and we kind of work our way to where we are right now, and it's, it's a long process. And every year when we look at things, we're stuck, because there's this formula, which has been talked about a little bit, the net school spending, and then how much above net school spending the community can give us, and that's always a very limited amount. And there's things that have happened in the, in past years, like the hotel tax and the restaurant tax and all that other stuff, that can help increase that a little bit, but we're talking, you know, a couple percentage points, you know, like a 1%, 2% kind of thing, over that net school spending. But we've had conversations, we've done this almost every single year, I, I believe, where we say, what we really should be funded at is this, which is 10 million, 15 million dollars more than what we know we're going to get. And if we had that money, we'd be able to do all these programs and hire more teachers and do all these things that we want to do, that we think we need to do, but we also know we're limited, because you have that net school spending, and that's where we're at. And we always look at what's, what we call our DART districts, and the DART is comparable districts that's decided by the state, by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, and they say, these nine other school districts are similar to you in some way, whether it's demographics, household median, all those other things. And Attleboro is a very unique area. There's, you know, the DART districts are, are interesting, is a good way to put it, but we are always one of the, the lowest or the second lowest, I think, in, in the 14, 16 years I've been involved in this. We've always been the lowest or the second lowest as far as per pupil funding when it comes to those DART districts. Is that a fair statement, Mark?
Yeah.
So we, we're limited, but we do, and we've done this before, where we actually say, hey, So we, we're limited, but we do, and we've done this before where we actually say, hey, we should be funded here. And I, I do remember one year, maybe two years, we actually, when we got to this point, we actually voted forward a budget that included that extra 10 or 15%. And of course, people, like you were saying, they, they went, they, they went crazy. Over at City Hall, they went crazy about this and we're like, we know we're not gonna get that, but we're trying to make that point that this is where we really should be. And every single year, we're falling a little bit more behind and a little bit more behind. And when you have the budget that we have with all of the expenses that we can't control, I think we always talk about every year, there's like a 2% wiggle room and that just keeps getting eaten up a little bit, little bit, little bit. So that is the difficult that we have, but we've definitely advocated for more and, and what we believe will be right. But, you know, it, when it's just on a, on a Monday night school committee meeting, I don't know how much of that actually gets out into the community, so.
Right. And I, I think that's an important point. I mean, I first started coming to school committee meetings in the early 1990s before I believe, I think probably any of you were actively involved. And it's, it's, it was amazing to me, um, how we're constantly talking about though, how the, the system is moving forward, system's moving forward, the system's been moving forward. We've been moving forward for 35 years and yet we're still, when it comes to funding, near the very bottom of the state. And this term net school, ah, net school spending, that's, that's really, to me, a misleading term. I think what they should call it is the minimum amount of money the state has determined it's legal to spend on education, which, which to me is an embarrassing bottom threshold. You know, I mean, if you were spending the legal minimum money necessary to take care of your own children, how would people view that? And I think that's how we have to look at this situation. You know, I mean, the world is full of, of tough financial choices, but, um, you know, again, I, I'm a business and political consultant. My goal is to get more business in our community and the reason to have them here is to create jobs and bring in revenue. And I think if we can make the public understand the necessity of growing the pie, if we don't grow the pie, where do you go? I mean, the economy, for whatever people think, has been good in recent years and we all know the windfall we got from the pandemic. It was actually a financial windfall for governments, but the reality is what's gonna happen when we have a turn in the economy? Everyone keeps talking about being over net school spending. I fear the day when the city is gonna be faced with the choices of, do we go below net school spending or do we close a fire station like we did when I was the city councilman? I had the vote to close a fire station. That's a hard choice and I'm afraid the city is gonna be faced with those choices again. But if you haven't been advocating vocally enough for the things that really are important, it'll be a lot easier for them to not give you the money when they're faced with that kind of a choice. I think if, if, if people truly knew how you're getting by on the bare minimum, they would have a much different perspective when it comes to deciding how to allocate, as we all admit, very slim resources that our community has available. Um, again, I'll, I'll leave it at that. If anyone else has any questions, I, I still want to take up all of your time.
Mr. Frappi?
No problem. Uh, thank you, uh, John, for coming tonight. We really appreciate it. I do want to illuminate some things I think add to your argument and will help everyone with their understanding. The biggest single increase in our spending, not by percentage, but by line item, is insurance this year. Our insurance is going up by 2.5 million dollars. In fiscal year 19, it was only 12.5 million dollars. We have gone up, we, I can't even do the math right now, but we've, 7 million dollars in the course of five years. That is across the city, that is across the school district, it's across the state. We are seeing more of our money being eaten up by what is required to, you know, what we should be giving to people, but it's eating a lot of the money we could take to educate students. And that's probably, it's very depressing and I don't want to steal Mr. Larson's thunder, but he's provided a chart about if we keep increasing insurance rates by the year 2035, I believe, 100% of the school budget would be health insurance premiums. Uh, and then just to expand the argument just a little bit, not even an argument, we do see windfall from millionaire's tax in very, I'd say invisible ways. That is funding universal free student lunch across the Commonwealth. Attleboro does see part of that. It is helping our students after they graduate get free community college or a mass grant program if their families make under $85,000. It's not very visible. You have to pay attention to see it, but it's not even obvious. I didn't even know these numbers until we started talking tonight. But not many people understand where their tax dollars go and you'll see it, you know, kind of jokingly, oh, why do I have to pay for schools? My kids don't go to school. And my response to that is, why do you pay for the fire station? Your house is on fire currently. We don't get to go à la carte with our government spending. But I think you're right, not enough people understand where our money goes. And if people saw those insurance rates, and I think more people are understanding, these raises are untenable. Either if you work in private or public sector, you're paying more for health insurance and it's actually hamstringing our student's education, your personal growth as a family and your finances, and it makes it harder to afford college. Again, still another school committee member is Thunder for a minute. They told me the tuition for their student for next year for a private college, $83,000 a, a year. I laughed, I thought he was pulling my leg that that was an amount. That is what they're charging in private colleges. And, you know, our in states are trying to stay competitive and we're sending more students to them as we should as a public, you know, entity, but our responsibility to our students does go before they're in K through 12 with pre-K and hopefully we'll see a universal expansion of pre-K with the millionaire's tax, but also after college, when they graduate. The money the millionaire tax is funding does help our students even after they leave the doors, even if it's not visible. It's little bits and pieces that they'll help recognize over time. Um, so this isn't to contest anything you said, I just wanted to add to it. I think you made excellent points and, uh, thank you for coming tonight.
Well, Mr. Frappi, I appreciate you sharing that information and, and, you know, educating all of us on, on, uh, imagine a, a school committee educating people. That's one of the, you know, one of the roles I think you play, not only is, is to oversee the education of children, but the dissemination of information to the community about, um, you know, what it is, what it is that you actually do. I think a lot of people have no idea what the school committee, or for that matter, the administration faces every day. I think the better informed the community is about what you do and what the real facts and circumstances are behind what you do, um, the less public turmoil we'll probably all have to deal with.
Any other questions or comments for Mr. Davis?
Thank you all so much. I appreciate you indulging me. I, I, I'm long-winded.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that would like to speak, neither for nor against the proposed budget? Anyone that did not get a chance to speak earlier, either for, against, or neither for nor against? All right. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Uh, onto our regularly scheduled meeting. Uh, first item on the agenda is our Student Advisory Council update. For that, I will turn it over to Representative Lennox.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I do apologize I have to leave after this, but Attleboro High School is very excited to be announcing that they will be hosting the Southeastern Massachusetts Association of Student Council Spring Conference. It's a mouthful, we call it CMAS for short. There are going to be over 600 students from over 30 schools in southeastern Massachusetts and they are going to learn how to lead through a series of workshops and keynote speakers, one of which will be David Sawyer and Kate Campbell. I appreciate both of your help. We also, on behalf of Attleboro Student Council, would like to congratulate Emily Olson, a junior from the high school husband elected to be the secretary of the CMAS Council for the 25 to 26 school year.
Awesome. Congrats to Emily. Uh, any questions or comments for Representative Lennox? Mentioning that Attleboro is hosting that conference reminded me, um, Representative Hawkins alluded to this earlier, uh, that the state, uh, Joint Ways and Means Committee hosted their public hearing for Health and Human Services in the auditorium today. Um, I want to thank Principal Campbell and her team, um, and Senator Feeney and his staff for putting on what looked to be a very well-attended and fantastic event. Um, a, a building like this, being able to host an event like that is one thing that we, that we're hosting similar events to what UMass Amherst is hosting, the flagship of our public university system. Uh, says a lot about the, uh, the staff and the, the facility itself, so thank you to everyone that was involved in that. I had mentioned, uh, I meant to mention that when Representative Hawkins was here. Uh, so, uh, next on the agenda is our superintendent's report and for that, I will turn it over to Mr. Sawyer.
Thank you, Chairman. Uh, first order of business is, uh, we have a proposed meeting schedule for next year for the consideration by the committee.
Uh, so, uh, I'll, we're gonna take these as two separate motions. Uh, first, I will entertain a motion to, uh, accept the proposed calendar for the 2025, 2026 school year for, uh, the full committee meetings.
Moved.
Second.
All right. Any questions or concerns? Any discussion?
Oh, just a question. I didn't have a chance to look back to last year. Was our July meeting on last year's motion or is, because this year I see July and August of 26, but not July of 25?
Typically, I think the calendar goes, uh, September to, or actually, I think typically it goes August to July, but I, I forget why we, I know eventually we wound up canceling the July meeting last year.
We did.
But I thi, I think typically it goes August to July, uh, but it helps to have the extra. We can already start planning for the added August one. Any other questions or concerns? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Uh, next, uh, I'll entertain a motion to, uh, accept the proposed, uh, 2025, 2026 subcommittee meetings for the school committee.
Moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. Um, our other piece of business this evening is to, uh, provide that overview of our proposed FY26 budget. Um, you know, on, on any other given evening, I would, uh, enjoy the opportunity to, to join in on, uh, the comments about our funding woes and the challenges we face. Uh, and I've many times before tried to reframe those conversations, uh, around the idea that we don't have a budget problem here in Attleboro, we have a, a funding one. Um, but this is the exact moment when, um, really the focus needs to be on the budget itself. And, you know, as we discuss, uh, over and over again, how we spend our money is a reflection of, of, of our values and, um, you know, what we care about. And, you know, as an underfunded district, uh, we face real significant challenges on, um, returning the kind of results we do, given how much less we have to work with. Uh, so it is a point of pride for us that, uh, we so creatively, uh, make our dollars stretched to accomplish all the things that we do. And so I would be remiss, uh, before I hand this over to Mr. Fratato, to not point out, uh, this is scheduled to be his last, uh, budget for the district and, uh, he is one of the unsung heroes in the district and we would not be able to accomplish what we do without, uh, his many years of, of service in helping us to be good stewards of our, of our financial resources, um, that, that we do so much is only possible because we have someone as talented as him, uh, to help us to make good decisions. With that, I present Mr. Fratato.
Thank you. Good evening. Um, the first thing I want to say is, is we are in a very, very fluid situation, which is, uh, more so than usual and I just want the community to be aware of that. Um, I would ask that if you come across any questions, any, any thoughts where you can't connect the dots, that you stop me immediately. I, I think that would be helpful for the community as well, so we don't get past a, a topic and then come back and try to revisit, um, just because of the nature of the situation at the moment. Uh-oh, I'm in trouble. Um, so, without further ado, um, I will, oops, maybe I'm on. For the current circumstance, um, we're using that number 110 million dollars, um, because that is, uh, the result on the state's cherry sheets from the governor's budget proposal that was, uh, released about, uh, third week in January. Um, completely normal, uh, timing, um, and completely normal process. Since that point, we have not progressed anywhere in terms of budgeting, uh, in conjunction with the city. Um, and of course, uh, the legislature at the state level, which is going to change that number, that's going to change. Um, so it's the, it's really the only number that we can tie back into anything real at this point. We certainly have, uh, strong aspirations, um, to get more than that and are, are counting on that, um, uh, given the circumstance that's going to exist in '26. However, we don't have it. Uh, a lot of, uh, stuff was done to accommodate the needs we know we have and can't avoid. It's either enrollment-driven or, you know, uh, regulation-driven, uh, contractually-driven. It, there's no way out, so we had to do some things from an economic perspective. Uh, I will hit on the special education thing again, uh, to accommodate all those needs for '26.
And Mr. Fratato, just to, uh, the, the, like I said before, the, uh, concern in relation to not being able to move forward with the city is not because of the city's unwillingness to work with us or, or plan. Um, they've, uh, the, the city's budget director has been on a military leave. Um, he was expected to be back, uh, a long time ago?
Oh, no, I think, I think the timeline had always been April. Um, so I think he's expected back sometime this month. Uh, the, the problem that developed is, uh, he warned everybody that if he got into operations, if they actually went out into the field and did the things soldiers do, uh, in situations, uh, that he would not be able to communicate with the city. So through, through the end of, uh, '24, he was communicating quite frequently and keeping the trains going and then, uh, kind of went dead in, uh, January. Uh, and has not, I, I don't think he's resurfaced in any meaningful way. Uh, so the city, as we, as we got closer to, um, the, the mayor, uh, the gov, the governor releasing her budget, uh, started to get concerned and then ultimately brought in, uh, Mr. LaCast to help, uh, the process until, uh, the budget director comes back. So that's, again, another kind of very fluid situation, um, and we're working with Mr. LaCast to try to get to, uh, you know, the initial thoughts on, on the city number.
And as well-versed as he is, he's been away from the city's finances for a couple of years and so reorienting to everything that has changed, um, is, has caused some delays, so just wanted to provide that clarification.
It's not an easy job.
Thank you.
Sure. Um, so, um, again, this 110 million dollar budget, which is the foundation budget, it's what net school spending is based on, um, is, is a $6 million increase, uh, to the, to the school district. Sounds like a lot of money. Sadly, uh, it, it's really not and, and in particular, uh, when we start talking about things like health insurance, um, it goes away very, very quickly and we'll talk more We have, uh, again, had discussions with the city, we've had discussions with Mr. LaCast. He is, he is, uh, really pressing through, uh, the various city departments to, uh, get, get, you know, his hands around where everything is, uh, to understand, uh, with the anticipated growth for next year, what, what's possible, what's doable, what's practical. Um, and, uh, you know, I, I believe the city administration remains committed to doing what they can to keep us at a 2% above net school spending target, which is not a promise, but certainly an intent. As I said, it's still early. Um, the next step at the state level is the House will propose a budget. It will be different from the governor's budget. Um, and after that, there's a reconciliation with the Senate that constructs an actual third state budget, which is, at that point, a pretty reliable, pretty reliable number. Um, on the city side, uh, once Mr. LaCast gets his arms around the other departments, um, we'll, we'll have a sit-down and, and the kind of wild cardinal of that will be, uh, the notorious city credits. Um, they're, they're in an interesting situation there where for '26, um, as this committee knows, we've brought back a lot of students from the charter school. So their charter school tuitions have dropped significantly. Um, and, uh, the resulting reimbursements for the, from the state for charter school have dropped significantly. Both of those numbers are typically used to get those credits. Both of those numbers are typically used to get those credits. Our transportation costs have increased significantly, as evidenced by the fact that we've gone two straight years with dipping into the stabilization fund. So the credits are not going to be as generous as they have in the past. But again, that all has to be worked through and, and calculated. And then the impacts we know we have for '26, healthcare, as was mentioned, is a 15% increase across the board for the products serviced by the city's healthcare fund. Water and sewer rates, based on the events of last year, are also going to be up significantly, double digits. We have to, of course, meet our contractual obligations on our side. And we strive to try to make the transportation budget realistic with the expectations of not having to tap into the stabilization fund in '26. We'd like to have a clean budget in transportation for next year. So for whatever dollars we receive that are going to be above net school spending, we have a series of enrollment issues to address, notably at the high school whose enrollment is up significantly. Two teachers and a cosmetology teacher in CTE. To help absorb the additional students. In special education, one teacher and two paraprofessionals. Those are at the elementary schools to deal with the establishment of an additional Spark classroom. Again, we're restricted as to how many students we can place in one of those classrooms and have hit that, hit that wall and it's time to open a new one. And then at the middle school level, various supports that are going to require two teachers and two paraprofessionals. In addition to that, the superintendent has had conversations for two or three years now, trying to establish a presence for an SRO at the middle schools for a variety of reasons. One of the key ones is when the high school SRO goes, we're left kind of empty. So provide some support in that way. And then, as has been the case for three years now, our special needs staffing challenges in terms of getting people to come into some of the more challenging job placements, we will continue to rely on contracted services when we can't get those folks in. And then, very importantly, and something I've worked very hard on during my time here, is development of new curriculum materials. We have a hope to establish a new math curriculum in '26, as well as an ELL curriculum component in '26. So what happens next? We, we hope a city budget gets developed quickly. We were hoping end of March, that did not happen. We're hoping in the next two weeks perhaps. Though at least the House proposal will be probably sometime in May, early May, hopefully. Reconciliation will happen through May. And if that is, you know, an easy process, and it has been an easy process in years past, you know, we can expect a state budget final by, you know, early June. If they start throwing things at each other, that could, that could then run into July easily, as it did last year. At which point, we'll be back in front of you requesting approval for the finalized budget. And then the mayor would submit to the municipal council.
And the, the, as the city's budget gets developed, the, the anticipated, the timeline that was provided to me was by the end of this week, they'll be closer to identifying a number. So when, when the committee meet for our April 28 meeting, we should have the hard city number in place with anything above net school spending for further discussion and, and vote to send up to City Hall.
Oh, based on the governor's budget, which will get tweaked. So, yeah.
Right. And this is, but that's to, to your point earlier, that's how fluid the situation is. We're going to get one number, it's going to change, it's going to change again, it's going to change again. Then we're going to vote on it, April 28th, and then it will change again a number of times after that. Any questions or comments, Mr. Storrs?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Chris, you know, you indicated that we were looking to increase CTE staffing by 1.0. I think it's important to put out there how CTE is, is, it's better than self-funding. We actually come out on the positive side. So could you speak to the title funding and why CTE? It's, you know, how there's additional funding associated with that?
Sure. I, I think there's a couple of impressive things to say about the CTE program here. One is the extent to which Attleboro High School students are enrolled in the program. Getting off the top of my head, I want to say... 60, what's that?
Nine.
That's even higher than that. Yeah. Mr. Chair, it was 90.
So, yeah, it's 90% of the students attending the high school are enrolled in a CTE program. And as a result of that, we can take credit for quite a bit of CTE students reporting to the state. When we do that, we get a premium of about $4,000 or $5,000 per student in Chapter 70 money, which is, you know, an incredible help for the district. And because of that success and because of the efforts of the high school administration to get students enrolled, they're at capacity in a bunch of areas. But the most pressing at the moment is cosmetology. And in order to keep that kind of progression of students enrolling in CTE, we needed to get another teacher.
So the reason why I wanted to bring that up is if you take, say, 1,500 students, which is probably around that 80 or 90, maybe even more, 5,000 additional per 1,500 students, I just wanted to put that out there, that Attleboro is in such a unique and advantageous position because of our CTE. So I don't want it to come across that, yeah, we're looking to hire another cosmetology teacher, which is going to hurt our budget. If anything, it's going to help our budget. I just wanted to make sure that was clear. Thank you.
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Well, I don't need to ask my question anymore. My question was along the same lines, because we had discussed last week, the last time we met, rather, that there are certain programs where if we have the demand, we still have to cap it because if we, if we accept more students than what we are allowed to, then we lose that funding. And I know cosmetology is a very popular program, so I just wanted confirmation if that additional teacher would be to expand cosmetology. And it sounds like that answer is yes.
Right. Which would, again, again, allow more students to participate.
Exactly. Thank you.
Just to clarify, there's a little bit of a wrinkle there with cosmetology in that the requirement of hours is higher in cosmetology than some of our other programs. And so we, we need another teacher in part to provide more contact hours for students so that we can be in compliance and get that funding. So there, there is an hours thing with that particular program, which is part of what that request is about.
And I'm sure, just a real quick follow-up, that I'm sure that that return on investment is, that we would see a return on investment.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Hi, Mr. Domenici?
Sure. Thank you. I didn't know who was going first, but thank you. Ms. Fratato, I just, I just tried to get a clarification. So the child credits on the city side, or that the city receives, is based on enrollment out of the district in, like charter schools? So if there's, if I'm reading it right, because more kids have come back and there's less schools out, that may result in less credits?
Yes.
Okay.
And that's not the only basis for the credits. They do a bunch of services administratively, paychecks. They produce all of our paychecks.
Sure.
You know, the auditor's office, et cetera.
That, that's the funding they get off of our, like, that goes to the city side of the budget?
It's part of their credit. No, they take...
They take that from...
The state will allow them to take a per pupil cost. It's something, I think, right now about $150 per student to pay for administering the healthcare system, producing the paychecks, auditing, you know, our financial stuff, as well as providing safety personnel, crossing guards. And the, the SRO we do have is part of their, in their budget. So they take a dollar value of that and then they also get credit for what's going on with charter schools.
So, yeah, off of our budget, there's always that line item there. So the less number of...
Less number of students going to charter schools.
Charter schools, the more...
The smaller their credit debt.
The smaller that credit is.
Right. And that gets offset by transportation. And since our transportation is growing, it's going to be a bigger challenge for them to meet the, meet just net school spending numbers, never mind going above.
So while more kids back in our district gives us more Chapter 70 funding, it causes a challenge on the city credit side that they're already getting.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. Bennett?
Thank you. I was going down the same road that Mr. Domenici just went. But, so I want to make sure that, that in fact, it is better for us to have the kids here than at the charter school.
Always.
Okay.
Yes.
Because that would be really an oddball.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right. Because I think they get a better education here, too.
Yeah, yes.
For sure.
We would agree.
So the, the other thing, and thank you for patiently explaining this. You always, you, as I've, this is now my second budget hearing and I'm starting to finally get an understanding of the, of the multiple different pieces of moving parts that all come together to generate this. One question I have is, what, what is the difference usually between the House budget and the governor's budget? Does it, does it get better for us?
It almost always gets better. Sometimes just marginally and sometimes in a, in a more meaningful way, but it always gets better.
Like by a couple of hundred thousand dollars or a couple of million dollars or?
Yes and yes. I, I think more likely, you know, the hundreds of thousand dollar kind of increment. But there have been times when it's, when it's jumped pretty significantly.
Okay. That, that was all I had. Most of my other questions got answered as you went through it.
Mr. Storrs?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, so one thing I want to say, you know, over the last, say, 15 years, that, I know you've been here longer than that, but, you know, we've lived through two and a half million dollar budget deficits, a million and a half budget deficits. So whenever we have a year where we're not talking budget deficit, we're all, we're all happy. So that's, I think, an important piece of this because we've lived through the other side of things over the years. But I do want to say, and I'm not trying to steal anybody's thought, I know you're going to be around for the rest of the year and then an advisor for many, many, many months, which I think is great. But just, I want to thank you personally for everything you've done for this district. So, because, you know, this right here is one of the most important things that you do every single year and you've done it amazing, so I just wanted to point that out. So thank you.
I had another comment, but... No, to Mr. Storrs's point, the fact that we're sitting here talking about a minimum net school spending level service budget not resulting in any loss of staff, loss of programming, and the prospect, the prospectus, possibility of us being able to look ahead and say, we've got more coming and this is where it's earmarked. It's, it's been a while since we've been in that position. I, I agree with a lot of what Mr. Davis said and a lot of what I think we all understand, that we still have a long way to go. But the, I mean, for the past eight to 10 years, through, through collective bargaining to rationalize salaries, where Attleboro is still a competitive employer in terms of salary range, without going too far beyond what the capacity to compensate good staff is, it's, it's been a very delicate balance. And so it, I agree that this is one of the better situations we've been in, but it's still nowhere near great. And I will also echo Mr. Storrs. A big reason we have gotten to where we are has been the work that you have done behind the scenes in collaboration with the administration and working with the city. So, great job on the final budget presentation. Thank you for preparing your replacement in, in all of this. But, but we, we really are grateful to your service. This isn't the last time we'll hear from you, but knowing the, the importance of this moment, it's absolutely worth recognizing.
Thank you.
Any other question, Mr. Larson?
I hate to rain on such a happy moment, but I, I think going back to one of Mr. Davis's comments and to the comments that you've made, there's that balance between funding and budgeting and, you know, managing expenses. And what we're prepaying with $25 to help '26 is definitely the right decision to make. So I don't want anyone thinking that I'm questioning that decision because I'm completely on board with that. But I think everybody listening needs to understand that when we go to put the next budget together, we still have $1.1 million that we're going to have to backfill, 800,000 of it, because we were in a position where we could do something in '25 to help '26. So when we go forward from '26 to '27, we all need to understand that that 800 is still going to be out there and that we are going to need to find a home to backfill that from.
Absolutely.
So I just, I always get a little concerned when we start spending one money to help the following, the, the year coming up. It's the right decision to make, but we all have to remember a year from now that this was a decision that we made and it was the right decision. But we're going to have that in front of us.
Thank you, Mr. Larson. You really did...
Sorry, I didn't mean to...
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Mr. Fratato.
Thank you.
So, you know, we will be back to the committee with a, a final number from the city when we have one. Hopefully that'll be at our next meeting. And we will, you know, re-propose the budget with a more accurate number at that time. But wanted the committee and the community to know that we have a plan for the, the net school spending number. And again, we anticipate that the city will be able to do better than that and we have good plans for how we need to use those funds. But, you know, we're going to wait till we have an exact number to get, not to get ahead of ourselves.
And if the, if the city's, I mean, we only saw... Forgive me, I put the... Eight positions, nine positions? And on that slide of...
I think it was a total of 12.
12? So if, depending on where the number comes in, we may be able to even go beyond that as well, which would be ideal. Maybe not much beyond it, but...
Yeah, I mean, you know, to bring it back to funding, there's 200 people who would work here in any other district that don't. So we have a long list of, of needs that we'd be happy to attend to. And that concludes my report.
Excellent. Thank you, Superintendent Sawyer. Next item on the agenda is approving the minutes from our March 24 meeting. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, edits, or updates? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next is our consent items. We have five items on the consent agenda. I'll take all as one motion unless anyone has any concerns and would like anything taken separately. Seeing none, we have a motion to accept a donation from Bliss Restaurant to the AHS Leo Club in the amount of $144.48. Motion to accept a donation from Kyle Cares to AHS for Ivy Watts presentation in the amount of $2,500. Motion to accept a donation from New England Institute of Technology to AHS for a cost of transportation in the amount of $460. of transportation in the amount of $460. Motion to approve an overnight field trip for 172 grade eight students to visit Washington, DC from May 5th to May 8th, 2025, as amended from our approval on March 26th. And a motion to declare the listed obsolete science textbooks a surplus for disposition as they are no longer of value to the district.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Any comments or questions, concerns from the committee? Mr. Domenici?
Just a comment. I love seeing, and it looks like the number keeps increasing for the grade A student trip to DC. I think last year, they had to get an extra bus because so many kids were interested. And I just like that we have those opportunities for kids to go down to DC and see how government works and, you know, I'm just happy to see that this continues.
Thank you, Mr. Frappier.
I'd like to request a correction. There's actually two field trip forms for 160 and 170 students.
It's the same field trip. It's just two different schools, correct?
Different dates.
So we, the original concept approval was sent in and approved by you. And so since then, we've contracted with a new vendor and changed the dates. So that's the reason for the two field trip forms in there, because one was the original and this is the updated form.
Thank you.
So the-
The dates changed too, though. That was, so it was increase in students and a change of dates? Thank you.
Yeah. So it's the same trip?
I just, it wasn't clear to me from, thank you.
Sorry about that. That's okay. Thank you, Ms. Regan. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next are our subcommittee updates. We have a finance and budget subcommittee report from the April 2 meeting. And for that, I will turn it over to Subcommittee Chair Larson.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Finance and budget subcommittee met April 2. There is one motion that we'll be bringing forward. Before I do that, as we've kind of spoken about already this evening, we had a review of our budget year-to-date at the meeting, and we are in good shape from a budget point of view. And it's one of the reasons we're making the move that Mr. Fattaro described with the out-of-district tuitions. We had an MSBA update. There's a number of projects going on. A lot of them are done at this point. And so I, I mean, I know we've talked about them at great length here, but there is a phone project that's coming up that we'll be doing over the summer. That'll be phones and switches and some wiring. The camera project is done. And we had talked about doing some maintenance and some addition changes to some of the food service lines at the middle schools. As of the meeting, two of them were done and one was still to go, but it was on schedule. We had an update on the redistricting project that the district is engaged in. The website is, excuse me, the webpage is now up on the district's website, and I would encourage everyone to visit that. You can also get some of the information on the APS app, if you have that on your phone. And there is a survey, if you go to the webpage that we're encouraging members of the public to take, it will gauge some of the information that people already have on redistricting and will give them some more information about the process and how it is to come. We have gotten information out of City Hall for some of the planning purposes that go into this project. And that took a little longer than we had anticipated. So we do not, at this point, have a date for the first community engagement, but we still anticipate it being the latter part of April or the first part of May. And as soon as we have those dates, we will make them aware, we'll make them out to the public, and there will also be on the webpage for people to find the times and locations. And there will again be community engagement again in the fall when we have actually more clarification to the process. So the one motion that we are bringing forward is we recommend to the full committee to approve, a motion to approve the creation of a new revolving account for the purpose of the Attleboro Technical Institute to collect fees, monies, tuition, and pay for supplies, materials, and salaries associated with the program.
So moved.
There a second?
Second.
Are there any questions or concern? Mr. Storrs?
So in our current budget, are there any account line items already existing for the Attleboro Technical Institute? There's none. So how are we handling all of the payments and the tuitions and the monies and everything?
It's apparently being run on a grant. So the grant is supporting all of the financial needs of the program. That will one day go away, and it'll become a tuition-based program. And tuition would be deposited into the revolving fund to pay the expenses.
And just to verify, so when we approve this account, the only funding that'll go into it will be through the tuitions?
Yeah. And so as of now, nothing, because it's still grant-supported.
That's what I wanted to verify. Thank you.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Chairman, that's the extent of my report.
Thank you, Mr. Larson. Next is open forum. This is the time when members of the public may address the school committee. Open forum is not a time for committee members to engage in dialogue with members of the public. Guidelines for open forum are available to you. Please know that we are interested in what you have to say, but we cannot respond without background information on your issue. Each open forum participant will be given three minutes to address the committee. Please come forward and, to the podium, and state your name and address for the record.
Joey Ford, 44 Hours Smith Street. Good evening. My name is Joey Ford, and I'm speaking tonight because my son Loki, who is autistic, non-verbal, and has Down Syndrome, still does not have a full-time licensed certified special education teacher. This is month number four. The district has known about this for months and has done nothing. At the same time, the district has not responded to my counter offer in our ongoing BSEA settlement talks, despite using that as their reason to extend the case. And while that process drags on, DESI is forced to pause its investigation. Because of this delay, I filed classroom-wide complaints, and I urge other Project Success families to do the same. If you know anyone in that classroom, please share this information. Let's clear up some public misinformation. The school committee used a recent radio appearance to spread false claims. I have not filed 265 records requests. Your math is wrong. I have not asked for 10 years of records on all special education students, and there is no paraprofessional operating under a DESI waiver in Project Success. That happened in the Insights classroom at Thatcher. Families in Insights, please understand, a DESI waiver may satisfy minimum compliance, but it does not equal a free, appropriate public education. If your child is in that classroom, you may have a case. Now let's talk about public records and transparency. The district has refused to put its original settlement offer in writing because it included a demand that I withdraw my public records requests, the same ones that could expose the real state of special education in this district. That is illegal. That is unethical. Rather than comply, the district has twice petitioned the supervisor of public records asking to be excused from providing documents. Both times, they were denied. I have also won two appeals in my favor for prior request responses, four rulings in total against the district. They have even claimed my written request to stop bullying me was a threat. It's insulting and frankly absurd. Ivan Maderos continues to ignore my legal right to accommodations by refusing to send my son's records in digital format despite my documented disabilities. This is ongoing deliberate noncompliance with federal law. Mr. Geddes falsely claimed that Shannon Stevens cannot be assigned as a full-time teacher due to contract limits, yet she is already supervising IEP implementation in that classroom. The contradiction is clear. I've also been told by multiple parents that the district is denying doctor-approved diagnoses to avoid creating IEPs or recognizing eligibility. If this has happened to your child, report it to DESI immediately. The retaliation against my advocacy is now undeniable. From misrepresenting facts to using planted voices in public comment to abusing systems meant for good faith negotiation, I gave the committee a chance to distance itself from Dave Kane's harmful radio comments where he spoke on behalf of the district and made jokes about autistic people. Your silence speaks volumes. I have been fully transparent, sharing every update and document with the public, yet the district accuses me of trying to bring the system to a halt. No, the system is broken. I'm just turning on the lights. Every day, more parents come forward. The full picture is worse than I ever imagined, and the district keeps doubling down, hoping I'll disappear. I won't. If this carries into next year, I'll still be here. And parents, every committee member here is up for reelection in November. The most powerful thing we can do is run against them. Go tomorrow, get the paperwork, and take back our schools. Our kids deserve better, and we're not going anywhere. Election Day is November 4th. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ford. Is there anyone else that would like to address the committee for open forum?
Good evening, Jennifer, McKee Street, Attleboro. I spoke earlier in regards to, in favor of the budget. My main reason for that was to get more funding for special education. I don't know if you guys have all sat into an IEP meeting, but they like to use the one times 30, one times 20. That's once a week times 20 minutes, once a week times 30. My son needs ABA therapy, and I was told it's three times five, which he goes, three hours a day times five days a week. It's 15 hours a day, 15 hours a week, sorry. 180 days in the school year, that's 36 weeks. That's 540 hours that my son would need ABA therapy. And I was told in order for him to get that, I would have to dismiss him from school. That's 540 hours of academic education that my son will be missing so he can have services. I believe the budget would be able, if we have that budget, which would be great, would be able to provide these children with the ABA services that they need and more services that these special education needs to be able to support their kids. Because in the end, 540 hours in a school year is not acceptable for my son to miss academic learning. It's going to push him back academically. So I'd like to see that budget go more towards special education and be able to support the kids with the disabilities. Because sitting in the meeting with Ms. Ivan and being told in order for him to get that, parents have to dismiss their children. I'm trying to get him those services so he can sit in a classroom and not have the suicidal audiation that he's having. I had to sit in crisis on a Friday afternoon, last Friday, because he expressed he wanted to go home and kill himself so he didn't have to go back to school. That's not acceptable. He's overwhelmed and overstimulated, and in order to get him those services, he needs the ABA to learn how to deal with the transitions and the environment of the classroom. So he, his self-disregulations, he can learn how to deal with that. That's what ABA is for. But being told in order for him to get that, he has to be dismissed, that's not okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. George. Is there anyone else that would like to address the committee as part of open forum? Seeing none, I will close open forum. Reminder of some upcoming important dates. This Friday is an early release for the entire district, and the ELC will have no school. Next Friday, April 18th, there is no school to celebrate Good Friday. The week of April 21st is April Vacation, so no school for Patriot's Day on the 21st, and then the 22nd through 25th is the break. We will have, our next school committee meeting is April 28th. That will begin with a school choice public hearing at 6:15 with the full committee meeting to follow immediately. Any other updates or new business from the committee? All right. Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to go into executive session. The Attleboro School Committee will convene in executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Chapter 30A, Section 21A 2 and 3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting might have a detrimental effect. Collective bargaining may also be discussed. Committee will not return to open session immediately following the executive session. So I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All right. So upon the motion passing, the committee and the administration will go into the superintendent's conference room to give double ACS some time to pack up and head out for the evening. So we will do a roll call vote. I'll start with Ms. Sawyer.
Yes.
Mr. Frappier?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Domenici?
Yes.
Mr. Geddes?
Yes.
Mr. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Storrs?
Yes.
Ms. Porto?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. We will convene in the superintendent's conference room in five minutes. Thank you.